Okay, let's begin with the pledge. Okay, you've got the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes or additions or subtracts that need to be made to the agenda? Okay, now the microphone is fixed. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have none.
Okay, if not, is your motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Is your second?
I'll second it.
Motion made second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, public comment, we have someone who wishes to introduce themselves, so...
Hello, my name is Gary Stokely. I'm a sheriff's sergeant here in Carver County, so I know Mr. Boer over there.
Are you Stokely?
I have 21 years' experience. The last 16 years with Carver County. I am the new mayor slash new Germany Town Cop. I chose to be in this position. I grew up here. My parents still live in Germany. I went to the mayor's in high school. I had a daughter that went there for two years, so I was her her. And I got another one. I need to pray that's gonna go on next year. So I do have a vested interest of controlling this area and doing what I can for you guys here. I know most of the firemen. I practically grew up with them. I think I know a lot of the citizens here. So I think it's a pretty good fit for myself. I think it'd be a pretty good fit for you guys. I'm easily accessible. I give them my phone number and email. I can do whatever you want to do. I'm just excited to be here. The last six years, I did bailiff and civil process. So I have a little bit of that background too when it comes to some of the problems on the border, whether it's civil or criminal, so that we can handle some other issues that we have here in town. Property disputes and stuff like that, so I'm glad to be here.
We first, when I remember, what year did you graduate? LHS?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. I remember the name. Welcome, welcome.
You have a brother?
I do, Ricky, yes. Are you older or younger?
I'm older than him.
And I have two younger sisters too that are the mayor also.
Welcome.
And my wife, yeah.
Okay, moving on with the, is anyone else who wishes to address the council? Okay, if not, moving on. We have the consent agenda in front of you. Four dot one approval of minutes of the December 28th, 15 regular council meeting. Four dot two approval of minutes for the December 28th, 15 work session. Four dot three approval of minutes for January 4th special council meeting. Four dot four approval of minutes for December 1st, 15 planning commission meeting. Four dot five approval of minutes for the May 4th, 15 mayor community for a lifetime meeting. Four dot six approval of claims for the month of January. Four dot seven approval of check summary funds for December 2015. Four dot eight approval of resolution 111, 2016, two gambling exception for the Watertown Mayor Gun Club. Four dot nine approval of resolution 111, 2016, four acceptance of baseball club donations. Four dot 10 approval of the building permit report for a month ending December 2015. And four dot 11 approval of the fire department report for a month ending December 2015. Any other additions need to be pulled up for discussion? If not, is your motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is your second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, then moving on to five dot one approval of ordinance 206P schedule, Luann?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. Every year, the first meeting of the year, the city council approves the fee schedule, and we do this by ordinance. So the city council had reviewed the fee schedule at a work session on July 20th, 2015. Council made recommendations for changes to the fee schedule. Council also held a work session on November 30th to address sewer and water rates, sack and wax fees. Attached is the full fee schedule, but also I took the first sheet and gave you just the changes to the proposed 2016 fee schedule. After reviewing any discussion, staff's requesting approval of ordinance 206P schedule.
Okay, you've got the fee schedule in front of you. Any questions for Luann? Okay, the area charge for water and sewer increased. Okay, if not, is your motion to approve the fee schedule as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is your second? Okay, motion made second to approve the fee schedule as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on, we have five dot two approval of resolution 111, 2016, three annual appointments.
Mr. Mayor, council members, each year, the mayor city council considers an organizational resolution that designates the depository and official newspaper. The resolution also appoints the acting mayor, city attorney, city engineer, financial consultant, auditor, insurance agent, building inspector, planning consultant, weed inspector, and assessor. Council consideration was given to the committees that each council member serves on, but also the appointments of members of the advisory committees to the city councils. City council are part of this resolution. The committee reappointments are hold and italicized on the attachment. All citizens were contacted about serving another term and all agree but Krista Goodell. Krista Goodell served on the park board. She also served in the planning commission. But she hasn't resigned from that position, just the park board position. The city has a vacancy on the park board and two vacancies on the mayor commission for a lifetime. Also, council had requested staff to contact the mayor rising community festival to inquire whether they wanted to continue with a liaison position. The responses was that they did not think that was a needed position. So Exhibit A reflects the elimination of the council liaison position for the mayor rising community festival. Also, council member Bodur has volunteered to be acting mayor. So this attached resolution and exhibits reflect the acting mayor appointment. Staff's requesting approval of resolution 1-11-2016-3, organization of the city of mayor for 2016. And then also a separate motion declaring vacancies on the park board, park and board commission, and commission for a lifetime and to authorize staff to recruit for the positions.
Okay, any questions or questions about any of the appointments?
No, according, according to page 48 and 49 in the list of appointments, just wanna make that clarification, that on 50, page 50, there's an error on the CCL committee.
And on the mayor rising community festival committee.
Yeah.
Oh, right here, yeah.
We've talked to Luann about that, so I'll move and correct it.
That is just my own little cheat sheet that I use. The Exhibit A is the one that goes with the resolution.
Okay.
But I'll make those changes and provide it to you.
Okay.
You can email that.
Okay, noting those changes that are gonna be made, is your motion to approve the appointments as presented? Is your second?
I'll second it.
Motion made second to approve the, any further discussion or questions, I'm sorry? And is, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, five dot three approval of ordinance 207, three landscaping requirements for C1, general commerce, C2, et cetera, et cetera. Luann?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members. This ordinance is a city of mayor initiated ordinance review. The planning commission had discussed about some of the landscaping requirements. So due to recent request in the CI district to construct new buildings, it was noted that the tree requirement seemed to require more trees than needed. And because of this, staff has been directed to review the tree and landscaping requirements within the CI district. So that's what the planning commission did at their last meeting. Their meeting in December, and then in January, they called for a public hearing to address the changes. So the current tree and landscaping requirements for the CI district are as follows. And I'm not gonna read it to you. It should be noted that these are the same requirements for the C1, general commerce. So they decided to make changes to the ordinance, and those are reflected in the ordinance that was attached, where they're taking, there'll be less trees, there'll be no landscaping at the foundation, foundation, and fewer overstorey trees. And the ordinance is attached for your consideration. The city council can either deny the request, you can approve the text amended, deny it, or you can table it to, if you want to discuss it more, so...
Is C1, that's the area where?
C1 is the industrial park.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I called Luann on this. I'm on the planning commission. And got a little more background on this. We approved a building permit in the Shimcore addition. And he stated that, you know, we were requiring a lot of trees according to our ordinance. So the planning commission met and discussed this. And if you go to page 56, five, you'll see where they took B out and C out. One overstorey tree for every 60 feet of non-street running perimeter. So the side lots and the back lots won't get any trees. And then the foundation plantings around the buildings on the street facing side.
So nothing facing the street has to have a foundation planting?
Correct. And they kinda agreed unanimously that that's what they wanted to do. And the more I thought about it, and I got looking at it, so when you go south out of town, you'd be able to see the fire station, you'd be able to see the back of that landscape lot and the new city. With that building, Chuck Moctavis, it'd be wide open if you did put the back rear trees on there. And then you start thinking about how big some of the buildings could get in there with no foundation planting around them. I'm not sure this is a good idea. I don't know how you feel about it, Don. You were at the meeting and...
Right, well, I mean, it doesn't matter to me while we're together. The, I think the idea was if you had a property that you didn't have enough room between the, from the building and the curb, like Rod was talking about his building, where he's got a parking lot right up to the curb. And there was no room to put any foundation planting. And he was concerned with added expense for the person who built it all up. Now, I mean, yeah, aesthetically, it may look nicer. But also the maintenance for taking care of the landscaping, people feel, there was a feeling that people were gonna take care of it. To put it in if they had to, then it would just kinda, you know, get overgrown and not get taken care of and stuff like that. Well, I mean, if the person wants to let their building go, they're gonna let it go regardless. You wanna make it look nice, they'll put clappings in if they want to. It isn't a requirement, but they can still put a clapping if they want.
So after talking to Luann and finding out a little bit of background information, I kinda wonder if we need to think about this a little bit. I don't know if council wants to table it and talk about it at a work session. But, you know, we've had businesses like Brad's that have kinda conformed to this. And we got one business that requested we have, have it changed, so... I don't know if they were still before the ordinance came.
There were landscaping issues with people that had deficiencies, and that was when Chelsea was still here. And she tried to work with them to get people to come into compliance with the landscaping requirements. And I don't know if people, there were some times, I think, that we gave in and didn't require it. We let them get by without doing it, just to try to get things settled and solved out there. I, it wasn't something that I dealt with. It was something that she dealt with, so it was a while ago. I guess I could do some research on it too.
Well, what do you wish to discuss further? I'm just looking at the things from the other communities that they surveyed. And there isn't a whole lot that's required as far as foundation plantings. So, but we can certainly talk about it at a work session if you want to.
I guess it's up to the other council members. I don't know how they feel about it. You know, I just don't wanna see a bunch of metal buildings out there with two or three street trees in front of it. And that's it. You know, it would be nice if they could maybe plant some evergreens and kinda break up the look of the building or...
Are you talking just on the front or talking?
Well, it says front here. And that was another concern I had, is what happens if that property, the east of there develops? And all them property owners, if it would be residential, have to look at all the back of those buildings.
Holding the farm to the east there.
The farm to the east. Or if that'd be up to the developer to...
Yeah, I think it'd be up to the developer to address that issue.
Address that issue.
Only, only I can, you know, and I'm not an industrial owner at that, but I guess, you know, if I bought the industrial lot in industrial park, wanted to use it for commercial use, I don't wanna fence it in. I wouldn't wanna deal with trees along my fence line. You know, if you were...
Kinda where I was at too.
Yeah, you know, I wouldn't want to...
It's an industrial area, it's an industrial area, but what you're saying kinda brings some sense to me too. And I guess if we wanted to send it to a work session and talk about it, I'd be willing to kinda look at it and think about it. But I guess I'm kinda leaning towards making the changes. But I think you bring up a valid consent motion.
Okay, so, does council wish?
I'll make motion, put it on the next work session.
Okay, motion made second to table this and put it on our next work session for a bit more discussion. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll take that to the next work session. Okay, five dot four approval to apply for Twins Youth Clinic.
Mr. Mayor, council members, for the past several years, the city has been applying for Twins Youth Clinics, and the park boards recommending that the city council again apply for a Twins Youth Clinic program for 2016. They're suggesting that it be in conjunction with the annual mayor rising community festival, and the date of the festival is July 9th, 2016. Staff's requesting approval to apply for the Twins Youth Clinic for that Saturday, July 9th, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. until noon.
Okay, is there... Go ahead. I see, is there a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the Twins Youth Clinic Saturday, July 9th. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, discussion on appraisal for the property at 323 Shimcore, Luann?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. City council had instructed staff to compile the cost for an appraisal for the property of 323 Shimcore. Staff contacted Chris Hokinson and asked for a fee estimate on the replacement and market approach appraisal from him. Staff didn't ask for the income approach because they didn't think it was applicable to the city. His fee ranges from $1,200 to $1,800 depending on the approach the city wants to use, and I've attached his email. The owner is not willing to participate in the cost of this appraisal. The owner did provide the city with an appraisal that he had completed on April 22nd, 2009, on the property at 323 Shimcore. This appraisal was completed at the time of the downturn in the economy. I've also attached an article from Moss and Barnett about the property values, and you can see by the first paragraph, they're stating that commercial real estate declined through 2011. So again, this attached appraisal was completed on cost, income, and direct sales comparison approaches. The cost approach of the property placed a value of $389,000. The income approach was $86,000. And the estimated value of the subject property by direct sales comparison was $299,000. Then the three approaches were averaged in the estimated value of the subject property of $335,000. With the thought that the city has offered 325 is well within the estimated value of the property according to the appraisal provided by the seller. Remember that the appraisal was completed at a time when commercial real estate was on the decline. City council could accept this appraisal that was provided by the seller or direct staff to have an appraisal of the property completed. Also, the building inspector has completed the inspection of the building on Wednesday, January 6th, and his email was also attached to this, to the memo. So there is a sheet in here also that was prepared by the city attorney as an addendum to the purchase agreement if the city wants to do an appraisal. It'll have to be accepted by the owner, and if the owner doesn't accept it, then the agreement is, the purchase is off. It would be, wouldn't be valid any longer. Just look for your discussion whether you want to conduct an appraisal yet based on the appraisal that we have been provided.
Okay, and I take a need speed, just up, at it, and this appraisal that was done in '09 was an appraisal for a bank line of credit. It was not an appraisal with the idea of selling the property at that time. It was an appraisal for a bank line of credit so he could secure loans as well for jobs that he had going forward. My comment on this, I looked through this, and I did my own iterations of looking at these numbers, and I feel comfortable sticking with this appraisal. It's up to the council. And I can show you the numbers if you wanna see what I did. If not, that's fine too. But I think it's a valid appraisal, and there's, looking at it a number of different ways.
I don't think that number's gonna grow up there.
Okay, basically, I looked, one with, the first one that I looked at was driven by this article here that Luann had found, that the commercial real estate had declined through 2011 and started gradually recovering in recent years, so, okay, since 2012. So I simply, first of all, using that, and I figured, okay, I'm just going to, and this is somewhat guesstimate, somewhat based on what I saw happening in the market, what happened to my stuff. So in 2009, it was worth, the value was $299, and I took the low value, the $299 value. And I said it dropped another 8%, and 2010 dropped another 8%, down there. 2011 started climbing, and I gave it a climb of 4% per year. So in 2016, it's now worth $2320,000. And that was more, like I said, just kind of on a guesstimate type thing. Then I thought, okay, let's look at the consumer price index. I've got a table in here. I'm not, I can pull it up, I guess, if we need to. Consumer Price Index. In 2009, the consumer CPI was 216.33. 2015, the Consumer Price Index was 237.336. Consumer Price Index is consumer, cost of consumer goods, how they've changed. Percent change from 2009, 2015 is 9.71%. If I start with the $299,000 value, that increases 9.71%, it's at $328,000. If we go, if I go with the 335 appraisal that they came up with, I have a value of 367.529. So again, I'm feeling more comfortable with the fact that that appraisal is a valid appraisal and that was done in '09. I then looked at the cost per square foot thing again. Okay, Ray talked about Mackinac, Gale and Mike said they were out. Their estimate for a pole barn type construction, all heated, everything insulated, water noise, $100, $105 a square foot. The LHS shop, the new construction, there's two walls and a ceiling. It's block construction. Little different construction, not steel frame, but it's block construction. But two walls and a ceiling, water in there, no bathroom. Bathrooms are down the hall. There's water in for sink and an eyewash fountain, and that's the extent of it. $186 per square foot. The permit has been pulled on this building next to Brad Kross. The building there is 50 by 100, insulated steel building. No electricity, no water, no sewer, no heat, 5,000 square feet. The owner had requested a permit cost of $150,000 for that building, which would have been any, the cost per square foot of $30. The building inspector looked at it and said, no, it's more like $383,000. Between the building inspector and the owner, they agreed upon $305 for, $305,000. Okay, $30 a square foot, $76, $60, $61 for just the shell, insulated shell, is all it is. No electricity, no water, no sewer, no heat. A number of builders have told Luann that you'd basically need to double these build numbers if you're going to add electricity, water, sewer, heat, bathrooms, all this kinda stuff to it. That puts us at these figures right here. The building and the Moctavis building is 2600 square feet. Using those numbers, I come up with cost of buildings, the cost to the building, cost of the building. Even at the very low end, it's $156, which obviously the building inspector says that's not right. $398 or $317. So again, to me, they all justify, this is the cost of the building alone, not the cost of the lot. The cost of the lot is extra. The cost of the lot, Kyle's already told us, is about $140,000. So you need to add $140,000 to these figures for what the lot costs. So in my mind, and that's how I'm basing my decision. You need to make your decision on what, okay, the only other comment that can be made is we could go with a commercial appraisal. We can go ahead and do that. Keep in mind that our deadline for accepting the purchase agreement, which is up to the council, no decisions are made to accept it, it's up to the council to accept it, is tomorrow. If we decide to go with a commercial appraisal, we're going to pay for, which we certainly can do, Chuck Moctavis has the full right to say, I'm out of the deal. He could pull out of it tomorrow, and then we're at the, we're back to square one in a sense. So questions, comments? And like I said, these are, this is how I arrived at my decision that I feel the appraisal that was given there was, and also the fact that it was an appraisal for a line of credit loan, not to sell the building. It was not, it was not something that was being fudged a little bit to get the value of the building up higher.
I buy your line of reasoning. It seems to make sense to me. I just, being a steward of our citizens' money, I still think we need to have the appraisal done. I mean, you wouldn't buy a house without knowing what it's truly worth. I think it's worth the money and the time to do it.
Speak up?
I kind of agree with Eric. I just, I mean, I don't know enough about appraisals and how much value they hold for what period of time. I mean, 2009 was six years ago. I'm not sure. You know, my guess is the value may have gone up since then. So, I mean, I'm kind of on the fence, I guess, if you really look at it. Cause 335 is still above what we even asked in 2009, so it's not like it had a value of 200. I think if you're gonna go ahead with that then, and we're gonna spend that kinda money on an appraisal, we need to lock MacTimas into at least extending the purchase agreement or whatever. I don't know if that's the way it works or not, but I guess I wouldn't wanna spend the money on the appraisal without knowing that Chuck is gonna wait until, not wait, but be okay with it.
without knowing that Chuck is going to, uh, wait until, uh, not wait, but be okay with extending that purchase agreement.
Good idea.
I, I guess I, I have no idea of how that would work, so, I don't know, can Brad, can you fill us in?
We can make an amendment to that and ask them to hold out and see if they sign it.
There is, there is an amendment, but, but that isn't in the, in your package, I mean, they provide you with the one that was from the city attorney?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
It's up at the top.
I think it's down, it's down for the...
Seventy.
Sixty, I think it's page sixty-nine here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I, here we are.
Right there.
But Chuck hasn't seen it?
Well, because I didn't know what you were going to do, so...
I just asked a question.
No, I do, he has not thought.
No, this is, this is something you wouldn't see, you wouldn't, we wouldn't even present to him that because it's, needs a council decision to do so.
I think we need to do it based on land prices, what Kyle came up with and what are on, what's on this information. The lot price is a lot different. I don't know if that'll reflect in the purchase of a building or not, but I, I think with taxpayer money, we need to do that. Before we purchase it.
I think I also changed it to be a confidential appraisal in there, I think is the wording.
Yep.
So that, um, that we do not have to share the, uh, what the appraisal comes back with the seller, with the seller if we don't, if we chose not. So, that information becomes confidential just for the city council's consideration. And that was under the advice of the city attorney.
Did Mr. Hokinson say, oh, it takes you getting an appraisal done?
I think he thought he could do one within two weeks.
Within two weeks?
Mm-hmm. He thought he could turn it around pretty fast. I can have this completed in either scenario within two weeks. So, he's saying, um, market approach, cost approach, market approach, cost approach with estimated, um, land value. So, we need to decide which way you want, which one of the two you want to do if you're going to do that then. Does market approach, cost, cost approach with land comps and grid? Or market approach, cash approach with estimated land value? Let's get his email. That you all have in your package. That one's here, yeah.
It's right here, okay. So, if we, if the council wishes to have the appraisal done, you want to set a timeline on, but when we can assure Mr. Moctemus that we will have a final decision? So, he's now left hanging? I mean, today is January eleventh. Is it reasonable to have it done by, three so tonight or not?
He's saying he can, but two weeks, it'd be two weeks from tomorrow, which would be twenty-six. If, and I can ask him to have it done, so you could have it for the council meeting on the twenty-fifth. I can try to do that.
Is that reasonable, and you can be able to get it done at that time, or do you want to push it out to February one?
I guess we can try to do it out for the twenty-sixth, and if we can't, then do you want to do a special meeting, or do you want to? That's the question.
Well, he says I can have this completed in the eastern, within two weeks, so if we're contacting, if we contact them tomorrow.
Hopefully, he can have it written.
I would think one day he could shave off of it.
Yes.
Yeah, but we don't want to pay for this unless Chuck will agree to extending...
And we can, if we hear tomorrow morning, we can sign that tomorrow morning and present it.
But then what if Chuck decides he doesn't?
If Chuck decides he, well, does not go with the law with it, then the purchase agreement is null and void, as far as I'm concerned. Because then our deadline to finish the purchase agreement was tomorrow. So, and I can, if you wish to go with the appraisal, that is, that's fine. Um, if Chuck decides to pull out, that's his privilege too. So, I guess the reason I'm saying two weeks from tonight is maybe that would be, if he hears that we are definitely have a decision two weeks from tonight, he's maybe more, more inclined to give us that two weeks grace. That'd be my guess, that'd be my, oh, he may say, okay, I'll wait that long and see.
Well, I'd make it through each, because we have to meet in two weeks, and what if the appraisal wasn't done or whatever? I'd at least go three weeks.
Three weeks and a special meeting?
We don't need one, because we have one in two weeks, right? We have a meeting in two weeks, hopefully the appraisal's done, and the extra week just gives us a little...
Oh, okay. Okay, someone, uh...
So, so...
What's the motion?
Well, what, what kind of appraisal do you want? I'm not an appraisal guy, I'm not a real estate guy, so I don't know what's more appropriate, so, if anybody got any input on that, that would be appreciated.
Brad, can you lighten us? Market, or what's, M A and C, whatever.
M, M A is here.
Cost approach and market approach.
If you, if you read his email, it, he kind of claims that, I, he said, I had my chance to look over the aerial map and county's data. I am quite familiar with May and do a bulk of my work in Carver County. Goes on to talk about his, I'm a general certified real property appraiser. He's the highest Minnesota designation with licensed to appraisal, all types of real property, and have been appraising commercial properties in this area for over twelve years. For this appraisal, I will be conducting a full market approach comparison with three to four comps and a grid adjustment page. I also will do a cost approach. This approach will be supportive of the sales comparison, so one potential way to keep my fee low would be for me to look at area vacant land sales and an estimated value of the land as though vacant. A more complete appraisal would be for me to expand my geographical area and pick the best six to eight vacant land sales I can find to put into the adjustment grid, including the report with details of each sale utilized. This will be a more accurate of the land value, but more time consuming, and I have, can have this completed in either scenario within two weeks. So, the M, I would imagine the one with the land and the grids is the more expensive one, where he looks at land outside the city for the comps.
It'll appear that way, yep. And if either can be completed in two weeks, I guess we could go with that then.
If we're going to spend the money, you might as well take it. Talking two to four hundred dollars, just like... But, again, I know...
Well, more like it's coming, it's going to come in at the top end, it's eighteen hundred dollars, this is fair, eighteen hundred dollars, so...
I, I'll make a motion that we get the, get the appraisal done, the M A and C A with land comps and grids, for up to eighteen hundred dollars. Give them total of three weeks, so we'll have some sort of answer on February one. That needs a special meeting, I guess we'll have to call a special meeting at that time. That make sense?
First, we're second, so that you make your decision on the first.
Sure.
And then let him know that it's due. That's why he was getting the extra week, or that's why we were going with three weeks, so we had a little leeway. I don't care, if we don't, we can push it out the next day.
Well, February second would be, you know, if we...
So, he'll have an answer by February second.
By February second, which is three, three weeks from tomorrow.
Oh, that is three weeks, alright.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll get that.
Okay, motion made second to go with the M A and C A appraisal with land comps and grids, uh, for a price of up eighteen hundred dollars, and having it done within three weeks or less.
Does that include the agreement signed by Chuck?
I think that you maybe want to, I would yield to the city attorney, but I would think that you may want, that is a separate motion to authorize the mayor's signature on the extension of the purchase agreement.
So, I would agree with that. I was just asking for background information there on that very point. But it seems that you want to authorize the execution of the purchase agreement contingent upon Mr. and Mrs. Moctemus signing the addendum that was prepared on the contingency for the appraisal and inspection.
That's true.
If they don't sign it, then it won't be effective.
Right. The point, yes, that's right, we don't want to pay for that, and they say we're not going to do it number...
So, the first action they're going to take is to authorize the appraisal, and then, then they'll take a separate motion to authorize the mayor's signature on the extension of a purchase agreement with that contingency.
Authorize, authorize, authorize the appraisal contingent upon Moctemus accepting the...
Extension.
Extension. Yes. Okay, so do you wish to amend your motion?
I do.
And you wish, wish to amend your second?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have motion as second to go ahead with the market and cost appraisal with the land grids, et cetera, uh, contingent upon Mr. Moctemus accepting the extension, uh, to the three-week extension on the purchase agreement. Any further discussion or questions?
Before we vote on this, do we have any further concerns regarding the email that we got from Mike Dodge?
Do you want to talk about that in new business, or do you want to do that now?
Do you want to do that before we approve this, or after?
Yeah. Mike, any thoughts, I mean, do you want to talk?
No, the one that we, was that two weeks ago?
I think Bruce was talking about the one that was just sent.
Wasn't there one just sent the last day or so?
Yeah, that's, that's separate from anything, that's, that's more just questions that I have answered that have something to do with moving forward on appraisal or something. I'm, I'm completely, Eric responded, I have a good handle on what's happened.
Okay.
My career disagrees, uh, different, but I understand. And, and this is progress, and I have more and more information. When I sent the email Saturday, that was coming off some of the stuff that I saw Friday in the package that I wasn't aware of, my biggest concern, I saw on the check register, there was a thousand dollars earnest one. I didn't know where that came from, and, you know, it begins. Uninformed, I didn't know what that thousand dollars was.
Okay, understand that.
So, I was concerned, so that's what the email, I, I, as far as moving forward, appraisal, um, agreement, addendum, I have no, no concerns.
Okay.
I think, you know, the homework's being done, the due diligence is being done however it's chosen to do it. If you went with Eric's numbers on that, this homework was done, um, that satisfied me.
Okay, okay, well, I just got your email today, so I didn't get a chance to talk to you.
Thoughts on that, or your thoughts on that, but that's more from my own. What are your thoughts on that?
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? If not, to call a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Posed, I will pose. Motion carried. Okay, other business, anything else?
Do you have to make the motion, are you signed?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Okay, now we need a motion to approve the...
To authorize the mayor's signature on the addendum to the commercial purchase agreement with the, for the additional contingency.
I'll make that motion, I'll say...
And I'd suggest one other thing to authorize the mayor's signature on a termination of the purchase agreement if they don't accept, so you don't need to come back to get authorization for that.
Can that just be part of the motion then?
I believe it could, yes.
Okay.
Two-part motion.
What's the March fifteenth date, what does that mean?
This would be changed to, I'm, I'm assuming to March, to February second, wouldn't it?
Okay.
Yeah, I think this date, whoever I think grew up.
We, they, they were, they were completed sooner than we thought.
We, yeah, okay, so that will be changed.
Yeah, this will be changed to February second, yes. Okay, so, uh, is that, are you, any, that's your motion? Okay, is there a second to that motion? And we'll summarize it.
I can second it.
Okay, your motion made second to approve this addendum to the purchase agreement for the time extension, and also if, uh, Mr. Moctemus withdraws from the purchase agreement, that then we would sign a, what'd you call it, Mike, a...
Yeah, I would suggest the, the purchase agreement probably requires a termination if the contingency's not met for your approval. So, then you could sign a termination with...
Then term, terminate, terminate the purchase agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carried. Okay, anything else? Okay, any council reports?
We talked about the planning motion being, so...
Okay, so we got that taken care of?
Taken care of.
Okay. Your motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.